I rebuild my own transmissions.
Wow.
It doesn't matter what it is.
That's impressive.
I rebuild it all.
I know. I know who to call.
I don't like usually saying it out loud because that's where everybody goes, "Hey." I think half my time spent working on stuff is, is working on other people's stuff.
I only changed my timing belt because it was like, okay, it's already dead. I'll try to do it.
Because what's the worst thing that can happen?
Yeah, if I screw it up, I'll just take it over to mechanic and let him mess with it for a while. But I had my stepdad, who's a mechanic, sitting right there going, "Okay, now we're gonna do this and make sure that..."
Top dead center.
Yeah.
Yep, everything's turning the right way.
How are you?
And if he did, it wouldn't matter. Nobody would listen anyways.
No, my wife told me I can't complain. If you're going to be that way.
I said that to one of my students. They said, "I'm gonna complain." And I go, "Don't complain, because nobody's gonna listen."
Yeah. Yep. They're not that expensive. I bought mine, put mine in, installed it myself. It was about seventeen hundred dollars. Yeah, I had to test my concrete first, drill some test holes, make sure it was thick enough. To, because I did a two-post lift instead of a four-post, because I wanted more, I wanted to be able to have the wheels free so I can rotate tires and do the brakes easier and all that stuff. And so, as long as, so I had to test drill a couple holes and I, yeah, I got the right thickness. Since I got an older house in the seventies, I guess some of the newer ones, they don't pour the... They don't pour them as thick anymore. Yeah. And then I ran, got the two, uh, two-twenty power ran to it. My air compressor's a two-twenty powered air compressor. Because I got a, I got a Maddox. Went to Maddox and got an industrial Quincy, four-piston, intercooled air compressor. Because I burned up three, I, I rebuilt my Craftsman ten horsepower. I built, I rebuilt it like ten times. The thing can't keep up with me. So I, I just got rid of that sucker and I bought an industrial air compressor that can keep up with me. I use that thing on the daily. I am always using that air compressor. But that thing's been awesome. It, I can be sandblasting and it'll still, like kickoff. It'll be running and kickoff while I'm sandblasting. Goes up to a hundred and ninety-five PSI. Had to get a special pressure regulator for it. It's actually gold-plated. He was like, "Here, here's the pressure regulator for it, a hundred and forty-eight dollars or something." I was like, "Holy crap, is it gold-plated?" And he goes, "Funny you say that." And he pulls it out and it, it was gold-plated.
Yeah, okay, there you are.
Man. That's right. I don't have any boats or jet skis or side-by-sides, but I got about two hundred grand in tools.
Sounds like you need to be making the YouTube videos.
I actually do have one.
Seriously. You do have one?
I do have a YouTube channel.
Do you really? For car repairs?
Yeah, for a lot of different repairs. The biggest one I have is because I took my little Spark out there. I tore the transmission apart and replaced the bearings in it. And they don't even sell repair manuals for it. You can't get rebuild manuals for that transmission.
Why aren't you doing that? Yeah.
And I tried to. I went to Chevy and they were like, "If you're a Chevy dealer, we can sell you the manuals, but if you're not a Chevy dealer, you can't." And the manuals are two hundred dollars for the manuals.
If you can get it.
Yeah, and I'm like, "Nah, I just, here, give me the exploded diagram of the parts and order me these and these and these bearings." I'll figure it out. And I'll figure it out, yeah. Not a big deal. So I did a short, I was messing with my cameras and doing time lapses. So I got a time lapse of me pulling the transmission apart. It's kind of funny because it looks like I'm picking it up and like, it's like light. But it's heavier than that.
And no phone calls from Chevy and GM yet, huh?
But, that one's got the most views. I get, what is it, three thousand seven hundred minutes, a minute, a month watched. And that's the most watched one, is my, the Spark transmission rebuild that I did.
Sure.
And I got people from India asking questions and all kinds of stuff. I'm like, "I can't believe that's the one that got it." I was just kind of messing around.
And you're still married?
Still married, yep. But, yeah, it's fun, but...
Jason can fix it. He can fix anything.
Right.
But being able to fix something doesn't mean you always should fix it.
Well, I figured that out thirty-five years ago when I discovered a checkbook. Easy.
You're not allowed to touch the checkbook?
Hmm?
You're not allowed to touch the checkbook?
No, I have my own. She has her own. No, I de, I decided that when a plumber or whoever would come to me and they would, you know, they'd charge me seventy-five bucks an hour, eighty bucks an hour, I went, "Hmm, okay, if I'm in the office, I can make three hundred bucks an hour. I'll pay ya." We even have an audience of some sort. Ready?
Yep.
Welcome. It is six o'clock. Time for the Roy City Planning Commission, uh, regular meeting, held at the Roy City Municipal Building located at fifty fifty-one South, nineteen hundred West. Uh, we will begin. Commissioner Bills, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's go to the first agenda item. Is there any declaration of conflicts?
No.
Nope.
Okay, we'll go to item number two, which is a request for conditional use and site plan approval for a cell tower for Verizon Wireless located at approximately twenty-nine seventy-seven West, fifty-two hundred South. Is a proponent here?
No. Not unless one of them wants to.
An applicant?
He's not here.
Not here? Well, turn some time over to you then.
Okay. Um, as mentioned, this is a, for a conditional use, uh, for a cell tower over there at the, by the Aquatic Center. Um, on the map that you see, uh, the little s, yellow square indicates the location. Um, it's in a location that, um, the Parks Department says it's unusable. And I'll show you kind of the site plan of why it is, but, um, it'd be within the, the city's property. And it's a conditional use within the, the zone, so, um, that's why we're here. So in the zoning, it's a recreation zone, kind of what's around it. Um, site plan wise, again, it's, if you kind of look at all the lines that go through, the topography lines, it's very steep. Uh, that's why it's kind of unusual. No one goes down there to lay in the sun at an angle. I'm not sure why, you know? Um, so it's kind of an unusable space, even though it's near the street, near the Boweries and, and whatnot. Um, kind of a up-close site plan. Um, there'll be a distance between sidewalk and the actual fence around the complex. And then there'll be another fence, and, and then you have the, the tower and all the equipment that comes with it. Kind of an elevation view, so you kind of see the topography as it goes. So there, there'll be a retaining wall, a six-foot fence around it. That, so people can't get in. And then just kind of your typical tower and, and equipment that comes with it. Um, I provided within the staff report that the two requirements, uh, for approval of a conditional use. Again, just to reiterate and what the... You, Troy?
Yes.
Okay, so after mine, you can go to him.
Okay.
But, uh, the way the state and our ordinance is, unless there are... You're unable to come up with mitigating circumstances that are reasonable, then you approve it. If there are things that you just can't do and, and stuff, then you can deny it. But, um, generally, when it's conditional use, you say, "Okay, that use we want within this zone." Um, there are no established requirements that you need to review. Um, generally, you know, a fence, you know, screened from public view, stuff like that, that can be, um, populated within it as your, part of your requirements. Um, in your staff report, you do have generally all of the DRC comments, uh, except for the engineer. He came late and, but, uh, there are a few things that, uh, he, he made mention that are different. But one's just landscaping and stuff, which, you know, really isn't that hard to kind of plant some stuff around it to make it less visible, less intrusive. But, um, most of the things you, you see there are pretty typical. Um, so screening the fence, make sure it's six feet tall. Um, so staff would recommend approval of the project, uh, within conditions as stated in the staff report.
Okay. And then if we can hear from the applicant now? Uh, just remind you to give us your full name and your address?
It's... Okay. My name's Troy Benson and I'm with Technology Associates. And we submitted this application on behalf of Verizon Wireless. And we're located at seventy-eight ninety-six South Highland Drive, Sandy, Utah. And, um, yeah, if you guys have any questions you'd like me to start off by answering, I can start from there if that works for you. Okay, I know the engineer had a, a few questions on the color, um, of the pole. And to answer that question, is this a standard metallic galvanized color? Um, I also saw a few comments on wanting the barbed wire removed from the fencing and that...
Apparently my screen wants to be extended, so...
Um, what I was saying is, is that removing the barbed wire from the fence wouldn't be a problem. We just usually put that up to discourage anybody from entering the facility and messing with any of the equipment or attempting to climb the tower, which there aren't any climbing pegs at a reachable level, so that shouldn't be an issue. And then as far as planting any trees, we can work with the city to try and screen the equipment as well as possible.
Okay.
You know, pictures are a mine. I don't know why you can't see it.
Technical difficulties.
It's not one thing, it's another, right?
Oh, there we are. Yes, that's just a, I think, I believe that's looking south at the current site location. If you go to the next slide, I have a few pictures. That's an example of a tower we'd be looking at. That's also a hundred-foot monopole, similar to what we'd be, well, exactly the same high as what we'd be looking to install at the Aquatic Center. And then at the top level, that's the antenna array, which would also be pretty similar. And there you have the, um, standard equipment Verizon installs. That platform is ten feet tall and they'd install two cabinets in the, uh, under the platform with room for one additional cabinet in the future as needed. And then just to the side of the platform, you see there, there's a backup diesel generator that would kick on about once a month just to make sure it's running appropriately. And that is, um, covered by a secondary sound enclosure to minimize any sound that can be heard from it. And there was a question in the staff report, why we couldn't co- co-locate at the site located at thirty-one hun, um, I think thirty-one hundred West, forty-three hundred North. And we couldn't co-locate on that existing site because it's too far west for the area Verizon's trying to cover with this new facility. So they currently have two other sites in this surrounding area, targeting the area east of what's currently shown. And this new site's, um, intended to cover... Oh, that, the, the new site's trying to cover between thirty-one hundred West and forty-three hundred West. And it's the, I can't, I can't find my notes where the, um, existing site is located that staff was questioning why we couldn't co-locate on. But that site just isn't feasible to accomplish Verizon's cover, coverage objective for this new site.
Any questions from commissioners? If not, then we would entertain a motion. Is this two motions?
Yeah, one for the conditional use, one for the site plan.
Thank you.
Hey, I make a motion that we approve the site plan for the cell tower approximately twenty-nine seventy-seven West, fifty-two hundred South.
We do the conditional use first?
Oh, you want to do that first? Okay.
Because if we don't approve that, then the site plan's kind of useless.
Okay, strike that from the record, right? Um, I make a motion that we request the conditional use for the cell tower approximately twenty-nine seventy-seven West, fifty-two hundred South.
There, second?
Second.
Who seconded it?
I did.
Daniel?
Not a real call vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, let's entertain a, motion passes. Let's entertain a motion for the site plan.
I make a motion that we, uh, recommend approval of the site plan.
No recommendation.
I'm sorry, what?
There's no recommendation. You approve it.
We approve.
Just approve it?
Yep. Yeah.
Make a motion that we approve the site plan as, uh, with the conditions as stated in the, uh, backup report by...
Is there a second?
Finished talking? Was that it? Were you done talking?
I'm done talking.
Oh, okay.
Is there a second?
Steve, should, uh, the conditions you put in there, should that be in the motion?
That's, he said the conditions in the staff report.
What, what, what conditions is stated?
Call second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes. Let's go on to number three, a request for architectural approval for Roy Retail located approximately nineteen forty-six West, fifty-six hundred South. Again, if the applicant would just state your name and address?
Uh, my name is Nathan Durbano and our address is nineteen forty-six West, fifty-six hundred South. We are, I didn't bring a digital. So we had purchased the building. Um, it's located right there on the corner of nineteen hundred and fifty-six, uh, and fifty-sixth. Uh, in, in error, I had started to have the building painted and I apologize about that. I, uh, had some buildings in a number of other areas and was not, uh, up to speed on, uh, the, the rules here. And, uh, so my apologies on making those changes. Uh, but we are just updating the exterior of the building. We're not modifying anything at all and would request approval to proceed in the updating of the, uh, the building there. You can see on the bo, uh, the top pictures how it was when we bought it. The bottom picture is kind of where we started. We're repainting the whole building with that, kind of that white and gray two-tone. Um, and then we, we stopped where you can see the white, uh, as, as instructed. And would like to continue with, uh, uh, painting the rest of the building, um, to match. Uh, just to kind of give it a new little, little bit of a facelift. Again, no, no modifications to the, the, the building at all. Uh, we will and do intend on doing some construction inside and will request the necessary building permits at that time.
All right. Steve?
Well, as mentioned, it's just a, a painting. The unfortunate part is our ordinance requires your approval for any changes to the exterior. I kind of wish council would give me that authority because we don't have a color code requirement of what you have to do. So the colors meet the ordinance. I actually think it looks a lot better than the orange or the reddish-orange brick and the yellow stucco. Um, even though I think someone was going for some sort of sun, sunset theme. I don't know. Um, so staff would recommend approval of the change of colors.
All right.
And it's not Nate's fault. It was Pat's fault. That's not Pat back there.
Yeah, we'll blame Pat.
He's just coming to ask for forgiveness for the part they've done, right?
Pat already has. I've reprimanded him several times. That's why he's not here.
So do we conclude that in our motion?
No.
So does he need to repaint it back the way it was?
Yeah.
And then repaint all over again, teach him a lesson?
Whatever color you guys want. We'll, we'll paint a bright orange for a week.
Okay.
Questions?
No.
Then we would entertain a motion.
I move the Planning Commission approves the building color modifications of the existing building located at nineteen forty-six West, fifty-six hundred South with, with the conditions as listed within the staff report.
Second. And we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose?
Thank you, counsel.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
You got downgraded. I mean, upgraded.
Move on to number four, a request for site plan approval for an outdoor sales area for a food truck at Advanced Auto located approximately fifty-seven forty South, nineteen hundred West. And applicant's here? If you'll state your name and your address?
Uh, Jacqueline Gonzalez. And that address?
Your address.
My address?
Yeah.
Uh, twenty-nine seventy Lincoln Avenue, Ogden, Utah.
Okay. Then go ahead and let us know what you're looking to, to do, what you're trying to, um...
So just a food truck. Um, it's like a food trailer truck. It's not, it doesn't have the motor, so it's just a trailer. Um, and just to park it right there. They, they let us, um, do ten hours, um, for now, but we wanted to do, um, more than ten hours a week or be like more of a permanent spot. The guys at Advanced Automotive, they love us already. So they're very happy and they, they, um, they told us that anything we need and they want us to succeed, um, in that spot. We want to be open late at night, like, our truck has like these really nice lights that we want to do at night, but we haven't done it. Um, and I just think it looks really pretty, right in front of Automotive, right there. So, I don't know. We do sell Mexican food. Am I supposed to say that?
I was gonna ask what kind of?
Yeah, Mexican tacos, burritos. It's called my taco land, so... We have a restaurant in Ogden, so we're planning on doing, um, many food trucks. Right now we have one and then we're in the process of bringing another one. But that's with Ogden City and stuff, yeah. But we have all, all our permits, fire department, um, inspector, the trailer, um, health department, Ogden City. So it's just this permit with you guys.
Okay. All right, thank you. Steve?
Yeah, as mentioned, it's just a, a food truck. Um, the ordinance allows for food trucks in this zone. And in fact, the state allows it, even if we don't, in our ordinance. Um, any zone that you allow a restaurant has to allow a food truck. Um, so, uh, but our ordinance does allow food trucks. There are some standards in which they need to abide by. But, uh, most of it, again, is just a site plan, making sure that circulation isn't removed from the existing use and parking isn't, um, obstructed as well, um, to get their licenses and all that kind of stuff. So, um, the state allows you to be at a location as long as you're not there more than ten hours a week. You don't have to have approval. Um, they're looking to be there every day, most of the day long. So, uh, they are looking for approval and this would just allow Advanced Auto to have a location like that. If, um, they decide, you know, Roy's just not for them and they want to move on, Advanced Auto can bring, bring some other truck in. Um, America First Credit Union Campus did the same thing. They allowed, approved an area for food trucks. And, um, there, I think there's another location somewhere, I can't remember, that's done that as well. Oh, Davis Hospital, um, has done that. So it's not uncommon to just kind of get an area, um, regardless if it's a permanent truck or not. Um, so staff would recommend approval for, uh, basically outdoor sales with the food truck.
Please.
Any questions from commissioners?
They're gonna be like tables and chairs or anything like that, or is this just a walk-up, walk-away kind of a scenario?
Um, is it okay to put a table?
I'm asking, I don't...
I mean, if, if, if it's allowed.
We just need to be in those parking stalls that are right next to you.
The guys were fine with giving me all that space.
Well, they have plenty of parking, don't worry.
Yeah, it's like, they were happy.
They've even got ten more stalls on the east side of the building.
Oh, yeah.
You can bring any samples with you?
I will, I probably...
You can go tomorrow.
We're gonna need to table this until you brings, no.
You guys have to make your, your presence there, you know?
Okay.
You understand that all the signage has to be attached to your vehicle and nothing can be put out on the sidewalk or anything to attract customers?
Um, no flag banners, nothing? Not even in the grass?
No, no.
Okay.
It can only be attached to your truck. So no saddleboard signs, no flags, nothing. It's gotta be just strictly on your vehicle.
Okay, that's good to know. Yeah.
If nothing else, we would look for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the site plan for an outdoor sales area for a food truck at Advanced Auto site approximately fifty-four, uh, fifty-seven forty South, nineteen hundred West.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got an approval and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? And motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Bye.
And we'll move on to number five for Commissioner's Minute. Is there anything?
No.
Nope.
Are we talking more about tools? So excited. I was getting hyped about it. I didn't know what he's talking about, but I'm wondering.
I get a little excited about tools.
We'll move on to number six, staff update. Steve, is there anything?
I'm just letting you know the council has, is scheduling. It's not official, but, um, I, I know at least three are coming and, but they're holding a work session for the general plan on the twenty-second of February, uh, downstairs. You're more than welcome to, to come to it. Um, the consultant will be there to kind of go over the who, the where, the what, the why and the how. Um, and then try to answer all their questions, so, um, they're starting their, their due diligence on it. So... Did they hold a open house for that development? They did an open house last week, um, invited the neighborhood to come. Uh, I think twelve or fourteen spoke. Um, majority of the ones that spoke here spoke there. Um, not a lot of new things came forward, um, you know, traffic being the biggest issue and, and stuff. Um, I believe the developer wants it to be on the next week's council meeting for a vote. Um, so we'll see where it goes.
If nothing else, we would move to number seven, entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. We stand adjourned.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye. Any oppose?
Nope.
No. You already overrode me.
All right. We stand adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Who seconded it again?
Oh, that's it. Let's get out of here.
Make somebody extra work on the notes.
No, because the twenty-second.